So good evening, everyone. This is the Watertown Water and Sewer Authority. Public hearing Wednesday, October 18th, 2023 at six o'clock. We're here at the Watertown High School Auditorium Room. I'm going to call the public hearing to order. Going to read the warning that went out the newspaper. Notice of public hearing on the proposed changes to water and sewer rates. Meeting here Wednesday, October 18th, 2023, Watertown High School Auditorium, 6:00 P. M. Pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, state statute seven dash two thirty-nine and state statute seven dash two fifty-five. The Watertown Water and Sewer Authority hereby gives notice of a public hearing on proposed changes to water and sewer quarterly quantity rates. Said public hearing will be held at 6:00 P. M. On Wednesday, October 18th, 2023, at Watertown High School Auditorium. This is an in-person meeting. A link to view the public hearing in listen-only mode will be posted on the town of Watertown website, www.watertownct.org by 4:00 P. M. On the date of the meeting. Written questions and comments pertaining to the proposed water and sewer rates are welcome and should be received by 4:00 P. M. Monday, October 16th, 2023, addressed to the Water and Sewer Authority, care of Chairman, WSA, 747 French Street, Oakville, 06779, or you can drop off your questions to the WSA office in a sealed envelope, addressed to Chairman, WSA. One, water user rates. Quarterly quantity rate per 1,000 gallons. Current quarterly water rate per 1,000 gallons, $2.52. Proposed 30% increase quantity rate per 1,000 gallons, .76 cents. New quarterly water rate, water quantity rate per 1,000 gallons, $3.28. Number two, sewer rates, sewer user rates. Quarterly quantity rate per 1,000 gallons. Current quarterly sewer quantity rate per 1,000 gallons is $3.01. Proposed 35% increase quantity rate per 1,000 gallons, $1.05. New quarterly sewer quantity rate per 1,000 gallons, $4.06. I'd like to take a roll call of the authority at this time.
Hey, Brian.
Mario Mancini.
You're going to ask me?
Jim Sudden. Item number two. Public comments on proposed quarterly quantity rates increase pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, state statute seven dash two thirty-nine and state statute seven dash two fifty-five. Well, number one, water user rates, proposed 30%, .76 cent increase in quantity rate for 1,000 gallons from current quantity rate of $2.52, $2.52 cents to new proposed rate of $3.28 per 1,000 gallons. Item number two is sewer user rates, proposed 35% increase. It's a dollar five increase in quantity rate per 1,000 gallons from currently, current quarter quantity rate of $3.01 to new proposed sewer quantity rate of $4.06 per 1,000 gallons. So at this time. I will invite the public to come up and comment to the microphone. Over there, please state your state your name and address, and we also have a sign-in sheet, if you would please sign the sheet as well. Thank you.
My name is Leonard Correa. I live at 34 Lilac Avenue in Oakville. Good evening, chairperson.
Can't hear you.
Members of the council.
Can't hear you. Speak up a little bit. Or move the microphone a little closer, please.
Members of the council. Fellow ratepayers. I'm here tonight to object the outrageous rate increases you are proposing. But first, I want to address the ongoing suit between Waterbury and Watertown. We, the ratepayers, should not be responsible for any retroactive water and sewer rate increases. Whoever decided not to pay Waterbury for rate increases should be held responsible. Unfortunately, we elected these politicians, and this is what we get. Bad decision-making, but they should pay or take a pay cut. For example. If I was to decide that every time EverSource comes up with a rate increase and not pay. I know I couldn't get away with it because my wife wouldn't let me. Unfortunately. The town doesn't have any wives. So we relied on our town manager, our town council, and our Water and Sewer Authority, and they did nothing. Second, let's talk about the outrageous rate increases. Now, I know I'm going to repeat what you just said. The water is going up 30%, 76 cents per thousand gallon from $2.52 to $3.28 per quarter. The sewer, 35%, a dollar five per thousand gallons, from 301 to 406 per quarter. When I was a working man, my increase were between 2% and 3% for the year. We're not company CEOs. The fact you installed water meters in our homes so you could charge us 100% for every drop of water that we use. And we have no problem with that system. The fact is, not 100% of the water coming into our homes goes into the sewer. For example. Drinking water, water we make ice cubes with. Watering indoor plants. Watering grass and shrubs. Outdoor flowers. Gardens, washing cars. And what I do every two years is get my house power washed, and you can imagine the amount of water that does. Fact. You are illegally charging us, all ratepayers, for sewer service, which you are not providing. This water didn't go in the sewer. So you're charging us anyways. Sounds like it's stealing. My proposal. The Sewer Authority should install sewer meters in our homes that then you can honestly charge us for every drop of water we sent into their sewer system. In conclusion, we, the ratepayer, demand an answer to our sewer meter request. I just want to let you know that I have a small five-room cape on Lilac Avenue. It's just myself and my wife. And my sewer water bill for the year was a little over $600, which almost 400 was for the sewer. So you can see where I'm coming from. We're being enormously charged for something that we're not using. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wish to address the authority?
Richard Rosansky, 35 Realm Street. Yes, I did. I don't, will you be answering any questions at all, or is this going to be no responses at all?
We could.
Um, just some questions. I understand that this, this rate increase, of course, we need to explain to the public that we have a fixed portion of our water and sewer charge and a variable portion, and this rate increase only affects that variable portion. Am I correct in stating that?
That's correct, yes.
Because a lot of people think that when they look at their water charge and their sewer charge, they think that 30% increase is the entire bill. They don't realize that it's the variable portion, which, which for many of us with less than 12,000 gallons makes up a very small part of our bill compared to the fixed charges.
Yes, this is only on the usage part, not on the meter part of your bill.
Right. So, um, that said, uh, we have a fund. We've been talking about the possibility, if we were to lose the lawsuit with Waterbury and we have to pay the settlement. We've been talking about a fund that had approximately like eight to nine million dollars in it that we could possibly draw some money from, and I understand that that is some sort of a a capital-type fund used to repair and replace the water lines. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that, that particular, um, part of your budget, is that funded by the variable portion of our bill or by the fixed portion of our bill?
By both.
By both. Okay. And how long did it take us to get to this balance that we have, eight, eight to nine million in that? In other words, are we, are we funding that to what sort of increase every year? Would you have any ballpark figure on that?
I don't have the answer to that this evening, but I can tell you that the last rate increase was in 2020.
Right, correct. Um, so I just don't know how well we're building that. And the reason I'm, the point I'm trying to, to get at is, um, if we were to lose this lawsuit and we have to bond, say 15, let's just say we have to bond $15 million at, for 20 years at four and a half percent interest, it's going to require the, um, the WSA to be making payments on that bond of over $300,000 a quarter. Um, so I'm all for putting as much money into that fund as we can in case we should lose this lawsuit. Uh, we're very close to being within striking distance of the Waterbury rates, uh, as they are. The current Waterbury rates are 354 for 1,000 gallons of water, 528 for 1,000 gallons of sewer. Um, so I personally, I, I have no issue with this rate increase. I hope we will consider, you know, the fact I just looking at this as a stepping point, because if we do lose this lawsuit, we're going to have to uh, go to the Waterbury rates most likely anyway. Uh, my biggest concern is, is the effect of, of bonding, because we are continuing to incur uh, cost to Waterbury, $9,000 of interest every day. Um, if it takes two years for this appeal to run through, we could be up to over $20 million, uh, well over $20 million owing Waterbury. So I'm just, uh, concerned about the, uh, the effect of paying off a bond if we have to bond $20 million, uh, you know, that, that four and a half percent interest. So, um, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to defer a part of that over to Attorney Jessel.
Uh, the, the, the point of this rate increase is just that, to try to put away some additional funds in the unlikely event that we lose the appeal. As far as the first speaker, this increase does not get us anywhere close to what the rates would be if we went to the full amount that Waterbury wants us to pay. It's still significantly short of that, but the Water and Sewer Authority has made the conscious decision not to try to overburden the ratepayers right now by going to that rate. Um, again, there's still uh, a great deal of thought that we will be successful on our appeal, and then we will have a lot of money that we shouldn't have, and we would have to find a way to get that back to the ratepayers. So, you know, to think that had we just taken Waterbury's rates, rates would be much higher even than what this rate increase brings them to. Much higher.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the authority this evening?
Catherine Camer, Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. Um, I'm probably going to have to come up a few times because I'm going to forget things that I wanted to say. Um. First off, why don't you tell us what those rates are? Because when I look at the complaint and, and the decision, I'm not seeing rates that are sky, you know, astronomical. So it'd be nice to be told what the Waterbury rates are supposed to be. Um, second of all, um, I was told yesterday that I was supposed to ask my questions before four o'clock on Monday, but then when I looked at the paper, that's not what it said. So I'm, I just got here. I'm assuming I can ask questions. Um. I say raise the rates, raise them. I'm all for it. I don't know why you're doing it now and you didn't do it in 2018. I really don't. Um, this is not, and, and, and I'll tell you that I've been so confused because I've gone to, to these meetings where Mr. Jessel's rolled his eyes when we're like, we're going to owe millions of dollars. My bill's going to go up so much. And I'm like, well, why is he acting like it's not really going to be that much? And then I go to the town council meeting and Mary Ann Rosa says, vice chairman, that her bill's going to increase like by hundreds of dollars. And then finally, someone not related to any of you here explains my bill to me, explains the rates, because most of us are looking at it and just saying, okay, it's going to go up three times of what the whole bill is. And it's not because you have your fixed rates and then you have your variable rates. So right now we're talking about, you know, the rates that aren't the, the fix, the, not whatever. You know what I'm talking about because you guys do this. So, you know, we're, we're, we as the, the people out here are clueless how to compute this, how to understand it, and, and, you know, we've never gotten anything in all these years with our bills that have explained what's going on, that have told us that there's a law, you know, a lawsuit. Some people knew, some people didn't. Um. And now I'm hearing tonight, well, we're going to raise the rates, but we're going to sock some of that money away. I want to know if some of this stuff is freaking legal. I'm sorry, I got a bill. I paid my bill every time I got it in full. There was no disclaimer, never anything that said, oh, and this might not be all you owed. And now it's like, okay, we're going to take out a bond and you guys are going to pay it. The ratepayers are going to pay it. Not all the taxpayers, even though the taxpayers are the people who vote the people in who have decided that we're not going to pay this. This is like mind-boggling, and we're getting nothing. We get a little bit at this meeting, get a little bit at that meeting. There's not a whiteboard here or, or a PowerPoint that explains your bill to people and what you're actually, you know, show us the rate that you're actually increasing. Tell us, well, that's not changing. This is, so we can compute this stuff. I mean, we are not water and sewer people. We're, this is not our thing.
Yeah, what I can say this evening is that we are increasing the quantity rates and not the fixed meter rates.
Yes, I'm aware of that now. Yes, thank you very much. I've learned that. Um, didn't know that before, and well, when some of us were saying, you know, there's, there's all these people saying, saying, oh, they're spreading all this misinformation. We're only computing what we thought was going on. When you, when, I thought all the rates were going up. What, I thought when, or, or that's what, uh, Waterbury wanted or whatever. So, you know, this has been very, very confusing.
Waterbury is increasing their quantity rates, and as Attorney Jessel alluded to earlier, that this increase doesn't cover the full uh, Waterbury increase at this time.
So can you explain what the Waterbury increase, when we, when you're looking at your bill? And you say, you know, is it?
When you look at your bill, you're seeing what Watertown Water and Sewer Authority charges you now. The Waterbury, uh, normally, and I, and I know you've heard the whole, uh, history, normally we have a contract with the city of Waterbury to determine what the rates are. We do not have that right now.
What I want to know is, okay, on your bill, you have, you've used, mine is 5,000 and 6,000 gallons for the, our, um, for the, um, water, the sewer.
Meter rate?
The meter, yes. So then you have, yeah, and then you have, okay, so one of them is times $2.52 right now, and the other one's times $3.01, I think, of that. Then there's the other. Uh, ah, thank you, because I didn't have my bill. All right, here we go. So then you have your quarterly charges. That's the ones that I mean that are, that are not changing.
The quarterly charge is the fixed rate for your meter, depending on the size meter that you have.
Right. So when you talk about Waterbury raising its rates, what happens to these quarterly charges? Is that affected in this Waterbury lawsuit, or is it just these rates that, you know, for us?
Well, that's why we've, uh, asked the consultant to do the rate study, and he'll look at, well, everything that we have, what Waterbury is potentially asking us to pay, what our um, expenses are, obviously for quantities of water and sewer, but we also have our own infrastructure to maintain. We have our own administration and billing, um, our own maintenance. So there's, there's a lot that goes into that.
I, I think you just said something. You said you're asking them to tell us potentially what Waterbury would have us pay. I don't, do we know what Waterbury wants? Do we not know?
Well, Waterbury has, uh, is obviously sued us for payment of what they potentially want to pay, and there is, uh, rate increases from what I understand that could be in the pipeline.
But those, what they've sued us for is, is the money from what we pay for the quarterly charges and the, um, you know, usage?
Right, right now it's just on the usage. So right now they've increased their, um, quantity rates, what they're charging us for water and sewer. So that's what we're looking at.
And that affects us on our usage rate, not the quarterly meter, these other charges. Is that correct?
So those are not being, um, those are not part of this this evening, only the quantity rates.
I understand that for this evening. I'm asking about with the, when you, when Waterbury wants to raise its rates, are they, will our rates be affected as usage? As the quarterly, all of it? I, I don't understand.
All that's open. All that's, all of that is open for change. I'm going to turn this over to Attorney Jessel.
I'm sorry, I think I can hopefully simplify this. What Waterbury charges us for water and what Waterbury charges us for sewage treatment are simply two of the expenses that the Water and Sewer Authority in Watertown has to pay in order to complete uh, providing those services to each resident within their service area. So in addition to paying Waterbury for sewage treatment, paying Waterbury for water, we pay to maintain our infrastructure. We pay employees to go out and take care of the infrastructure, to, uh, do all the administration. We pay for billing. We pay for all those things. Water, what Waterbury wants to charge us additionally isn't going to show up as a discreet little number somewhere in your bill. It's, when you, when you look at the water and sewer budget, that's where this is going to come from. It's going to show up in the water and sewer budget as payments to Waterbury. And that all those budgetary items then get split up, and the Water and Sewer Authority uses the rate, uh, consultant to figure out how much of that should be allocated to fixed charge, which is the meter charge, and how much to metered rates. So it's not, it's not like the Waterbury costs are just going to show up as discreet numbers on your bill.
So it will affect both of the, these figures, all these figures?
I'm sorry?
It will affect all the figures, the quarterly, um.
That's why they're hiring the consultant. What the Water and Sewer Authority wanted to do here was simply do something kind of quick to try to put away some additional money in the unlikely eventuality we lose the lawsuit. So that's why they're doing just the metered rate. They could easily have done it across the board for the fixed and the metered rate. They chose not to do that. The consultant has already started his work. There will be additional things coming out in the coming months.
So, um, in the past, obviously, we've had contracts, and then they've gone up. You've had a contract. So if you had a contract that we had a contract that ended, I guess it started in, I don't know if it was 20, was it 2013 to 2018, I believe? So when the contract went from the 2012 to the 2013, can somebody, you know, not tonight, point out what happened to our, um, you know, take a bill, or maybe I could, I guess I could do it on my own bill. Would that be correct? If I went back into my history, looked at my bill from, um, the last one had been June, the, the last ones before, um, the contract would have started July 1st of 2015. So if I look at my bill before that, and then I look at it after that, I'd be able to say, okay, so this is when the new contract came in, what changed, right? Wouldn't that be correct?
The changes, if you look at the contract that ended in 2013 and the contract that ended in 2018, the increases from Waterbury in there were contractually set, and they were relatively modest, because that's in line with what we had been doing for 81 years. Um, so you wouldn't really notice a big change. The Water and Sewer Authority did do some rate increases, and they were instituted over the course of five years, if I'm not mistaken, as a result of information from the consultants. They used the contract to figure out how much more had to go to Waterbury, and then how much more was necessary to operate our system on an ongoing basis. So there wouldn't have been a big jump between 13 and, or 12 and 13.
That's fine. I'm just saying, though, I would be able to see that. I should see something because there was a contract. I might not, not, not see any change at all in my, in my bill?
Not in your bill necessarily. Only when they do a rate change, you can see a change in your bill.
Okay, so, so those contracts didn't necessarily generate a rate change when the contract changed. Okay, and, and, and lastly, I just want to ask you, you, you keep saying in the unlikely event, or, or that we're going to win this appeal. Do you have some sort of crystal ball? Do you have people up, up in Hartford that, that are telling you? Because like, you keep saying that, and I, I think it'd be more fair to say that we, we would like to win it or, or whatever, but, you know.
But I have a lot of people telling me when we lose, and so I'm just trying to give what we consider to be the more likely out, thing that's going to happen.
Well, I, I, I think it's unfair to, you know, we have it out there and what, whatever happens is going to happen. I don't, I think it's a little odd for me to hear somebody so predicting that and, and giving it to the, the people out here because we don't know. I think it's more fair to say we don't know. Yep.
It's very simple, okay? We all could sit back, not going to think, let the rate, Waterbury wants to charge us, go through and bury you people with a water and sewer charge, okay?
But you're not telling us what that is.
Let me finish, okay? And the point is, we chose not to do that. We chose to fight Waterbury to get an equitable rate with a contract. They don't want to contract with us, and they're trying to jam their rates down our throat. Now.
What are the rates?
I'm not finished. We are responsible people. We don't want to hurt the users. We want to protect the users. So consequently, we are fighting them under rate. Every bill that came through was referred to Mr. Jessel, who sent back a note to Waterbury about, when are we going to negotiate? When are we going to set a contract? They refused to act for, what, four years? And finally, the last year, you had two meetings, which lasted like 15 minutes, and they basically said, pay or else. There was no dialogue. They weren't interested. The only lever we had was not paying them. That's what got them to solve the contracts in the past. And like honestly, it's the only lever we had to play with. As responsible people who didn't want to see you overcharged, who didn't want to see you get hit with something that was not just and not in a contract, we had to fight it. And if you don't understand that, I can't help it.
I'll ask you again. Tell me what the rate is that you're talking about. You keep telling us they were going to raise it, but you're not telling us what it is. And then it's sort of And then it's sort of like you're saying, well, then, and a consultant is going to have.
You had the rate date that Waterbury wants to charge us.
Well, what they're charging, what, yeah. So it's two sixty. So currently, they're charging us two sixty-five plus ten percent, which comes up to two ninety-two.
And that's for water?
For a hundred cubic feet.
That's for water.
That's for the water side.
Yeah, that's, that's a hundred cubic feet, so that's not gallons.
Not gallons.
Thousand gallons plus ten percent for water. Five twenty-eight plus ten percent for a thousand gallons.
They don't get the ten percent on the sewer, sorry.
Oh, you don't? Okay, time to say, time to say.
Just on, just on the water.
Actually, in current, Amber's bill, the Amber's bill, it's, it's for, for monthly bills. In the current Waterbury rate, per bill, it's below one hundred thirty-four dollars, quarter bill, one hundred thirty-four dollars, one hundred fifty-four dollars. And that, that's eight bucks, that's eight bucks a year, right? That's, that's not company. But if you got the bond, twenty million dollars, you're going to end up adding sixty dollars a quarter on everybody's bill.
I can't, I can't justify your math.
The math, yeah.
But, but our rate, our sewer rate now, under the, under the last contract, was eighty-eight cents. And what did you say the rate they want to charge us is for sewer? Five twenty-eights. So it's, it's, it's a almost five times what we're currently paying Waterbury for water. And I'm, excuse me, for sewer, and then for water, it's a similar number, because it's one fifty-four that we're paying. I believe it's one fifty-four that we're, we're paying now for water.
With the amount of charges.
And then, and what they are charging us is two ninety-two. So that's double.
So once again, because this is never explained explicitly, now you're telling us eighty-eight cents when I'm getting charged three oh one. So if Waterbury's charging eighty-eight cents, I'm getting, I'm getting charged three oh one. The rest of it's Watertown putting that money onto my,
That's right.
My sewer. So, so this is, this is again where I'm saying, we can't figure this out, because when you just said Waterbury wants to, to something,
Also,
in addition, but then you have to add in what Watertown wants too. Well, you know, when is somebody going to?
In addition to the quantity rates, we have to be able to operate our own system as well.
I understand that, but it's just, you're, that you're not explaining, Mr. Massey, that this audience cannot understand this.
The point is, you never listen.
Um, excuse me. Thank you. I'm listening. I, somebody just gave us a figure, and then somebody said eighty-eight cents. I don't understand why you think I'm not listening.
It's not.
This is something, you know, for you, you get it. You do this all the time. For us, we're hearing, well, Waterbury wants this, but then we have this charge, and then we have that charge. I'm sorry. I think it's very rude.
Eighty-eight cents is in two thousand eighteen, right? The eighty-eight is based on the two thousand eighteen rate that we're paying, not what they're currently charging us.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the authority this evening?
David, David Mango, two forty Riverside Street, Oakville. You know, why don't you get some type of, so people could understand how the system works? Mr. Pelosi was saying, oh, it goes up this year so much, and then the next year so much. Get a projector or something with a big screen and explain it to the people. That hard to do? That sounds a little more educated than trying to do it this way. This is like the shoemakers. Get a projector and explain it to the people. And if it goes up so much water, let's say if the bill was a hundred and forty-seven dollars, how much does it hit at the end of the year? And do it the next year, just to see, what are we going to keep paying? I understand what Joe said, trying to get some, some agreement.
Yeah, we need to get an agreement with the city of Waterbury, and so far, they've refused to.
Maybe you got to get a lawyer, where the lawyer gets through, they go home and commit suicide.
All right, thank you.
Good God. Get a projector or something, and explain it to the people. Just the bill, and every quarter goes up. Explain, what are we going to be paying? In ten years, we're going to be paying, uh, we're paying eight hundred a year. Now we're going to be paying two thousand?
Yeah, we don't know what it's going to go up to, because Waterbury.
Well, it's got a, a limit.
There, there will be no limit without a contract.
No limit.
There, there will be no limit without a contract. That's why it is so important.
Well, get the contract and.
We, well, we want a contract, they just won't negotiate.
Pardon?
We want a contract, and they will not negotiate with us.
Hey, you got to get a lawyer to.
That's why we're holding back.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. I think they're doing right, but no, the interest and all that keeps adding up and adding up, and if we ever lose.
Because if we have no contract, they can just charge us whatever they want. If we have no contract, they will charge us whatever they want.
Well, you have to assume if they're going to raise the rate, they'll have their hearing, because they look at us as a cash cow. All we will have to do then is pay their rate, because they will have had their hearing. We, that's out of our control. That's why we're fighting so hard to get an equitable rate with a contract that's got some lens to it, so that people have stability and knowing what they're going to pay.
You know, you've got a handful of people here, regular homeowners. How about the guy that owns Big Industry? I don't see them here.
We're very concerned about them too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Hi, Catherine Dinsmore. I have a suggestion.
Okay.
It really seems very apparent that people don't understand their bill. People don't understand variable. People don't understand bill. And my suggestion is, and again, I, I thought, uh, Mr. Mango saying, you know, again, we should have some type of, of visual aids, but there's eighteen of us here. So would you think about putting some sample bills in the town times? Taking out an ad, showing people, computing different bills, is explaining, this is your fixed portion. This is your variable portion, and it might help everyone to better understand what it is they're going to be paying. At a meeting, we heard someone giving an outrageous increase that their bill was going to increase by like a hundred and eighty, ninety percent. And I think it was because that person was computing the total of their bill. And I think people need to better understand what, what is, what are the the increases going to, which part of your bill are the increases? Where are they going to occur? And, um, I think that could really help. And I also think it would really help if we knew a little bit more about the Waterbury rates. And, um, I, I think you're trying to help the people understand, but I think it has to be a little bit more direct and a little bit more remedial. And I think you'll get a response from people when they finally can say, I understand this bill. And the people here who don't understand their bills, they're bright people. But it's confusing. And as I think someone else said, I think Catherine said, we don't do this every day. This is, you know, why you're here, to help us. And you understand things perhaps a lot better than, than we do, um, about our, about how things are being charged to us. So I would just like to suggest that you think about that. I think it would be a beneficial for how, how people think you're trying to help us, and you will help us. So please consider that.
Thank you. And that's, uh, one of the reasons why we, um, hired the consultant to, to look at this as well. So basically, this rate this evening that's proposed is to just cover quantity rates, and like we said earlier, that, uh, it's not going to cover the full quantity, uh, full cost of what, uh, Waterbury's asking for and potentially asking for. So the consultant will come up with, uh, some further information.
I think one of our problems is we feel that we're not, we're not being spoken to respectfully, and we're not being spoken to. We, we need more information. And yes, you're consultant, I, I understand it, but we, the people, could really use some real straightforward explanations, and perhaps just using an example of a couple of bills um, in the town times that might help everyone better understand fixed variable, what they're being charged for, what they're not, and use it at the percentages that, that you are proposing as an increase for both the, the, uh, water and sewer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Frankie Popilowski from Oakville. I'll sign an effort. Um, from what I understand from the town council meeting the other day, we're almost five hundred thousand dollars in the hole for Jessup and Pelosi and whoever the hell else you have on your payroll. By the time this has ended, we're going to probably be up to the million dollar mark. That's disgusting. Disgusting. Four hundred dollars an hour for what? You lost everything the first time around. What makes you think that you're going to win this next time around? And we're all going to be in debt. That's one of the problems. The other problem is, you don't want the taxpayers to know that they're on the hook for this too. Municipalities, schools, uh, the fire hydrants, all of it. The town pays for that. Stop lying to everybody. They're responsible too. You don't want to say that. You just keep saying the ratepayers, the ratepayers. No, it's every taxpayer in this town. Seems to me that we're getting punished for a lot of these big businesses around here, because they use most of the water. What's their portion going to be? What's their portion going to be? Stop sticking it to us. We've had enough. Please don't talk to us like we're stupid. Just explain it. Simple math, simple terms. That's all you have to do. You want us to respect you, but you can't give it back. We don't understand. Period. Just get that and, and just explain it, just like Catherine just said. Explain it to us. Put it on a board. I don't care how you do it. Do the simple math for us, so that we understand. So if I'm to understand, you're not going to be charging on the fixed rate. That will never go up? Or is that just this time around?
Just this time. That's why we have the consultants going to do a study.
Well, there you go, people. Another raise, another increase, because you can't tell us the truth. Why didn't you just say that?
This is all, this is all a result of, uh, of Waterbury failing to negotiate with us.
Yeah, and you guys letting it drag on for five years is not our fault. It is you. It is you.
We want to negotiate this. We, we wanted this, we want to negotiate this and get a contract.
Why did you wait over four years to even say anything to them? How many letters you sent? That means nothing.
We've been working on this. We've been working on.
Four hundred dollars an hour. Get on the phone. Enough is enough. Don't shake your head. You're a ratepayer too. You're a ratepayer too.
People aren't listening to the truth.
They're getting a lot of money. These attorneys are getting a lot of money. Get on the phone. Sending a letter once a month for four years goes nowhere. And you know that if you're a good lawyer. We all know it. Why don't you know it? I'm so sick of that. Sick of it.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Yeah, why are we signing in?
So, so we can just have a record of, uh, who spoke this evening?
Can I say who I am?
Sure.
Okay. My name is Elizabeth Vashtinsky. I live at five fourteen Silvan Lake Road, and I've lived in town since nineteen fifty-six. And I have access to my records since nineteen fifty-six for water. It's an interesting story.
Excuse me. Close it to the mic, so.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It, it, it hurts me to hear the anger and all the voices tonight. And yet, I think that on September seventh, when we met in this hall, they were given to you and to others who were not at the, excuse me, you were not at the main table, most of you, but the people who were identified as being responsible for some of this stuff, we asked you as a much more, um, large group of people sitting in here to please share information with us. And we are now a month, almost two months later, and we still don't have information about the authority, which is the, the, uh, people that you represent here tonight. I, for example, heard the people sitting here on September seventh, accepting my suggestion of there being more items about this issue that will be found on the website. And I don't think that you can point to anything that has been put on the website that in any way explains the situation that we are in now, or am I wrong? Is there anything that has been put on the website by the group of individuals here at the main table tonight, who represent the authority of any of their self thought process? I went to that office. All I received was a piece of paper telling me, in fact, that there's a meeting tonight. So here I am again. I would like to repeat that we, the persons who are interested in the payments which are required by us, the ratepayers, by state law, not by Watertown ordinance, but by state law, we, the ratepayers, ask most emphatically that we see ten years of audits on the Water and Sewer Authority. I want to know whether anyone over the last ten years has looked at how payments were being made, and what you, in your meetings, perhaps actually looked at those audits and had some comments to make at your regularly scheduled meetings. That's very.
I hear you asking about audits, and it, it, it's very hard to hear you. Maybe just speak a little bit closer.
Certainly, certainly. I think what I'm talking about is important enough to almost yell. And that is that ten years of audits, if they were available to the public here living and paying for water and sewer, they would be probably informed very adequately as to what was happening. I would imagine that you, the authority, have talked about audits in your meetings. Isn't that why you get together? Or is there other reads, reasons why you would be getting together? Tell us. Tell us what you talk about when you meet. Mr. Chairman, please.
If I understand you correctly, you're asking about audits. We, we have a budget. The budget's, uh, uh, available, and we, you know, we're, uh, essentially part of the town of Watertown. So that's all, you know, audited through the.
By state law.
Through every year.
Do you have audits for ten years that you are familiar?
Town hall would have all that, that were audited by the town hall.
Then, Mr. Chairman, would you ask, since you have heard this several times now tonight, perhaps you could ask the town manager to have them placed on the website? Could you do that? Could you tell us that you will do that? Because it is a part of the town audit. I understand that. But I also hoped that you would be able to tell us.
That, that information is available through the town hall.
Sir, you are the chairman of the Water and Sewer Authority. I think that a chairman of such an important group of people in our town would know whether an audit was prepared and would know whether the audit is available.
Be, uh, the finance director's office, I believe.
So are you suggesting that I go there tomorrow morning and say, please show me an audit?
Yes.
And would you ever have laid your hands on an audit of the group? And would you ever have laid your hands on an audit of the group that you chair?
I, I have not.
Well, maybe.
We review the budget.
The budget is what starts your, your fiscal year.
The budget.
But the audit is what you've done with the fiscal year. Do we know, do we agree on the meaning of these papers?
Yeah, I, I'm, and I'm having a tough time hearing you this evening as well. And I, and I apologize for that.
Okay, audit. That's the big word.
I, I hear audit.
And I'm suggesting that since I haven't looked at.
Yeah. So the, the audit, audits are available through the finance director's office. If you'd like to see an audit.
So I'm asking that you, as the chairman of this Water and Sewer Authority. Be kind enough to prep, to get the audit put onto the website for the town of which you are a, a task, a duty.
According to the attorney Jessel that's sitting next to me, audits are available on the website.
Could you tell me whether there's a 20? 22?
The 23 audits not done yet, according to attorney Jessel.
And the 2022 audit is there?
Yes.
With, and does it include also the Water and Sewer Agency? So in other words, you're saying that it's available, all of this information that our.
All this information that should be available on the town's website.
I'm have, I'm happy to hear it. And I'd suggest that you, both you and I, sir, read the audit then. For the Water and Sewer Authority.
Yeah. And what we're talking about this evening is rate increases to help offset the Waterbury. What potentially they want to, uh.
Exactly. But I have been talking for two months that we all have to educate ourselves about what is available. Because we, as we saw tonight, don't use the same definitions. We're not talking about the same thing. I also picked up a rate sheet when I went to the Water and Sewer Authority on French Street. And I too believe that that was going to raise my rates only up to the numbers which are listed. I'm learning a whole new spectrum of things which are called fixed rates and unfixed rates.
Yes. If you look at your water bill, there's fixed rates and there's quantity rates.
I'm suggesting.
There's different, there's different fixed rates for different, uh, customers. There's commercial, commercial users have a different fixed rate than a residential customer.
I'm happy to know that you can tell us that. I'm asking that the people not in this room also have access. Not necessarily going to the town hall and finding the right floor and finding the right room and asking for the right thing by name. I'm asking that you use the device called a website in order to put more information.
Yeah, all that's available on the town's website. So you just need to go there and look for it.
Uh, tell me your name.
My name is James Sugden.
Pardon?
Sugden.
Sub?
Sugden.
How do you spell that?
S U G D E N.
Okay. So I will go tomorrow to the office of the financial, the, the financial office of the town. And say, Mr. Sugden suggested that I ask you to give me the available audits for the authority. Is that correct?
I'm saying that you can go to the website and look for them yourself.
Great. I will do that also. But please understand that while you may be informed, we are not informed and it hurts.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one last thing. You of course know that all of these funds that are being collected and were mentioned earlier by attorney Jessel. They're all supposed to be not touched for any purpose, except the purpose for which they're collected. In other words, we can, it's not fungible money.
I don't understand. You speak a little louder, please. I'm not understanding what you're saying.
I have the ordinances of the town in my hand. The Watertown Town Charter. Tells us in the pages having to do with the Water and Sewer Authority. That there are certain kinds of funds that have to be maintained by Water and Sewer Authorities. And that they are not to be fungible. In other words, their money is not going to be transferred from one fund to another. You are aware of that, right?
We have funds for, uh, different light items. There's water fund and there's sewer fund.
And then there are also funds that the state law requires us to have, which also cannot be moved from one. Little pot of money to another pot of money. You are aware of that also, right?
We typically have, uh. Yes.
Attorney Jessel is right in telling you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the authority? Is there anybody that would like to go for a first time before we have second time people come up? Just want to give everybody a fair. That hasn't had a chance to speak for a first time yet.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Angelo Gizzy. I live at 141 Cable Avenue in Oakville, Connecticut. Thank you for being here. I know it's not an easy seat to be in. We understand. But I think, um, listeners of the crowd. With misinformation or not enough information comes trust patient, right? With not appropriate information or lack of total information comes frustration from, from the board. From the residents of, of Watertown and Oakville, if I'm correct. I just have a couple of questions. When did we begin litigation with the city of Waterbury?
I turn that over to attorney Jessel.
I believe they filed suit in 2019.
2019.
Correct.
And the contract, the previous contract expired.
July of 2018.
July of 2000. Um. And you say they refused to come to the table to negotiate a new rate.
That's correct.
Okay. And how many times have we tried to approach the city of Waterbury on this subject?
Three formally. Um, there've been at least three or four additional informal attempts, uh, just this year. Uh, and there were attempts made by prior town managers in prior years. I can't tell you exactly how many, but they were, there were attempts made.
And then we're going to appeal the original decision.
We already have done that.
All right. And, and we're still behind the rate that Waterbury would want us to pay if Waterbury is successful in that appeal.
That's correct.
And that would add that much more to the bill.
Correct.
And then I just have a golden question. So back in 2018. Apparently there was, there was notes from a minute that somebody wrote across and said it was okay to pay this rate was circled across it. If I'm, my information is correct. Do we know who that person is?
It was a board decision.
The totality of the board.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's the only questions I have. Again, thank you. I know it's not an easy seat to be in. I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Anybody else for a first time? We still have a little time, uh, for the next meeting. So second, second round. Anybody want to go second time?
Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. Just very quickly. So I think it was in September. I was at town council meeting when they approved another $42,000 of our money for this rate study. And I'm curious why you're doing this rate increase now, when you keep talking about that this, we're waiting for this rate study. So does that mean? And, and at that meeting, someone asked how long it would take and they said, well, up to about 90 days. So that's, you know, maybe, maybe we're talking three months. And that was like a month ago. So, so why are we, why are you doing this rate increase now rather than waiting until you get this report back? Because it sounds like, um, when that comes back, there could be another rate increase. Uh, I'm just curious why we're, why we're not waiting for that report to come back.
Yeah. We're, we're probably about six months out before we get the, uh, full report from the consultant. So, uh, the, the authority feels the need to, uh. Try to increase some rates to put some money away for, uh, additional monies away for worst case scenario is if we were to lose.
Is there, is there a reason why it's taking six months? Because I know at the meeting it's.
There, there's, there's, I don't know where that number came from, but there's a lot of information to be viewed. It's very, uh, complicated. Cause it's not just the quantity rates. It's also again, our. Costs to maintain our system, infrastructure, maintenance, extensions, administration billing. So there's, there's a lot more that goes into it than just the quantities.
And so when was, I, I thought they said the last time this was done was 2015. Do you know when the last time they did that? Was?
Uh, I believe it was 2015, the last, uh, rate study that we had.
I, I'm just surprised we wouldn't have done one at like in 2018, when all this stuff was going on with Waterbury. That, that.
No, we've been, we've been waiting to get, uh, you know, we were anticipating having a contract and knowing what the rates would be. Not thinking we were going to be at this point here at 2023 and still without a contract. And it just shows the importance of us needing a contract with the city of Waterbury.
I don't know. I'm just surprised. I would think that it would be a good argument if you had, had the rate study and, you know, it might've given you some information. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Second time.
I owe you an apology. I owe you guys an apology. Um, I was shouting stuff out from the audience and I should not have done that. And, and I wanted to apologize about that. You guys have a tough job and I, I do appreciate the work that you do. I should understand that. You know, um, emotions are high over this lawsuit. We're talking about a tremendous sum of money. That has a profound financial effect on, on the ratepayers. And, um, I don't agree with the, the decisions that were made to pay Waterbury at the 2018 rate. But what's done is done. And now we have to manage whatever we have. And I, and I understand that. Um, I, I hope that we can minimize the damage by cutting a deal with the Waterbury, maybe to forego interest or something like that. I don't have. Um, a really strong hope that we're going to win the appeal. I hope we do, but I, I, I'm a pragmatist. Um, but, but my question was, when we talked about the, um. The account that has eight or nine million dollars that we may be able to draw from, should we lose the lawsuit to help alleviate some of that settlement? What's the minimum amount we need to keep in that to manage? The maintenance and the replacement of our lines? What would that dollar value be in that account based on an annual basis?
I would say between a million and a million and a half. So that eight, nine million figure that you're talking drops it down to six.
Okay. So then on the fixed rates, because I'm, I'm, I'm well aware that from 2015 to 2020, we did a 5% increase every year on those fixed rates. I'm very, very concerned about the same company coming back and recommending another 5% per year increase on those rates. The, the, the question is, is can we maintain that million, million and a half a year on the existing fixed rate portion of our bills? Right now, with, with the money that we're bringing in and has anybody done that analysis?
Well, that, that's why we have the consultant working on that. I mean, this, this, this proposal this evening is to. Put some money, additional monies away in case we do lose that appeal. I mean, we are hopeful that. I'm going to turn this over to attorney. I, I just.
And, and it's probably true that we should get more information to everybody about how this all works. The fixed rate portion of the water and sewer bill. Is not intended to go into some capital, you know, that's, that's where all our capital money comes from. The fixed rate portion, we have costs that exist for our customers, regardless of whether they use any water. So if we based our entire bill on usage only. And someone's house was empty for three and a half months. Although we still have to go read their meter and we have to send them a bill and we have to do all these other things, we wouldn't get any money. So the fixed rate portion of the bill is really aimed at some of the overhead portions of. The Water and Sewer Authority's operations. So it, it, again, the, the whole, the whole idea of rate making. In the Water and Sewer Authority. Is based on budgeting and anticipating needs for capital, needs for extension and needs for repairs. And that's why it becomes kind of complicated and why a, a consultant is very important. But we're also, the fixed portion of that bill is intended to make sure that we can cover our overheads. When the snowbirds go to Florida, for example.
Okay. So what you're saying then is really the fixed portion, the, the meter charge and the quarterly sewer charge is really for day-to-day operational expenses. It's not for capital improvements. It's not for, um, maintenance of the lines. Rather that is the variable rate portion, the usage charge that a portion of that is going to cover the, the capital. Is that what you're saying?
You know, again, I'm not a rate making expert, but I don't think that any of. What we collect in monies, whether they be the fixed rate portion or the, the, um. The, uh, usage rate portion is necessarily earmarked for any one thing. They're intended to cover, again, the fixed rate portion is intended to say, if you use zero water. We still need to charge you $18 a month.
Oh, I, I, I understand that fully. My, my concern is that when I look, I've been working with my friends. Teaching them about their bills, trying to get them to understand the difference between the fixed portion and the variable portion. Showing them what a change in the variable rate will do to their bill on, on a quarterly basis, on an annual basis. Um, and when you look at, most of my friends are well under 12,000 gallons. Um, a quarter, uh, they are in the, uh, the six to eight thousand water, the five to 6,000 sewer. Um, so these rate increases are, uh, on the variable side, on the usage side are very inconsequential, really from a dollar and cents standpoint. But what really hurts is the fixed portions, the meter charge and the quarterly sewage charge. Cause that's the, the major portion of their bill is that fixed charge. And when I looked at the rates going back through 2015 and I saw that, you know, we had steady 5% increases every year on those fixed rates. Uh, my concern is that if those rates go up again. Um, you know, it's, I, I have great concern for all of us as far as paying our bills. Um, I don't have much control over how the, the, the water department in town controls their, their budget and how they control. You know, those kinds of costs and things like that. But I just want to express that, that I'm really more concerned. On that, on the fixed side right now for, for me and my friends than I am for on the variable side. But you know, it's, uh, it's not that big of an impact. This particular increase is not that big of an impact for, for most of us with less than 12,000 gallons. So, thank you.
Again, I, I did want to apologize to you for one thing. The rates I gave you, uh, that we were paying Waterbury under the, uh, 2018 contract. Are in CCF. So the 88 cents is CCF.
Yep.
As is the, the 154. So I apologize for that.
No worries. I understand. Thank you.
Catherine Dinsmore, again, I have two questions. Um, I believe you.
Speak up a little.
Sure. I believe you said, um, that the consultants, it might take six months. And I thought at a town council meeting, when, uh, the council was voting to pay the 42,000. I may, I may have heard it incorrectly. And if anybody was there, please help me. Um, I thought. The council said that the, that it should be completed in 90 days. Am, am I, did I hear that incorrectly?
If that was the case, it may, that may have been misspoke. Um, these things do take, they don't happen quickly. I mean, there's a lot of information that needs to be gathered. There's a lot of information to be looked at and it takes some time. And, um, and I would expect that the, when the consultant gets all the information, reviews the information. They're going to come to us and we're going to meet with them and, and review. So it's going to be a little bit of a lengthy process. So I, I would not. Expect not 90 days. It's not.
I'll check. I, I thought Mr. Lukowski might've said that, but I'm not 100% sure. And that's why I asked. The other question is, uh, when the gentleman asked who made the decision to, to not pay Waterbury. The, the rate that they were billing. And the answer was, we did, um, the water, the authority. Are, are you, you can do that without town council input because you are an enterprise?
According to the charter.
Okay.
The Sewer and Water Authority has sole discretion on sewer and water rates.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And yeah, we're not going to pay anything that we don't have a contract for.
Okay.
You know, it's just, it's, uh, you know, the same with the labor contract. Just because somebody's demanding a 10% raise. Doesn't mean you're going to pay them the 10% raise. Normally those things go through a negotiation and there's a period where you, you get a contract.
Okay. So the town council did not at all have any input with you, um, or discussions about whether or not you should, you were, you were not going to be paying the, the bills totally?
I'm gonna, because that's a little bit of a legal question. I'm going to turn it over to attorney Jessel for. I'm gonna, cause that's a little bit of a legal question, I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Jessel for a second.
Okay.
They were aware, yes.
But you didn't have to have a formal approval from them. Okay.
We would have to have an approval to pay. Um, and we, you know, obviously we weren't, we weren't gonna pay. Uh, for a rate, cause it would have been a astronomical increase at that time. We were gonna pay something that uh, we didn't have a contract for.
But you didn't need approval to not pay what they were asking. Is that correct?
Okay, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, one more, inside one more coming up here. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Vic Visensi, twenty-five Arcadia Avenue, Oakville. Several people suggested a sample bill. Be either displayed here or put in the Town Times. Can you commit to us tonight that there will be one in the Town Times next Thursday?
Well, certainly, it certainly couldn't be next Thursday as we're past the deadlines for that. Um, that. I, yeah, that would be something.
A week, a week from now.
You know, I I cannot make that decision on my own. That would have to be uh, come from the the authority.
But uh, that, well, that's what I'm asking right now. Can you commit to us that you will do something so?
We we'd have to put that on an agenda and then have a uh.
Well, again, it would be, it would be helpful because when people hear their bills going up thirty percent, this is what you get. And now, listening to what you're saying tonight, it is, but it isn't. So if you would like the people to be informed, I would suggest you convince whoever you have to convince. To get it in the Town Times. Obviously, not next Thursday, but the following Thursday. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Sure, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
To answer the last question there, it may uh, we may consider putting something in with the bill rather than in the paper. Cause then it would get targeted to the um, water and sewer customers. Um, directly and they, we know they would get it. A lot of people don't even get the newspaper now, so that's, yeah. Sure.
My name is Elizabeth Vashtensky, five fourteen Sylvan Lake Road. I would like to read into the minutes of tonight's meeting. What it says in the Watertown Town Charter. With regards to the powers and the duties of the Water and Sewer Authority. And I cite three point two. The Water and Sewer Authority shall have the powers provided by general statutes. To establish, maintain, extend and develop the water and sewer facilities of the town of Watertown. And operate all such facilities in accordance with the provisions of the general statutes of the state of Connecticut. The Charter of the Town of Watertown and any applicable special acts of the state of Connecticut. Said Water and Sewer Authority is in no way to be construed. As an autonomous authority of the town of Watertown with all of the. Excuse me, is in no way, let me start again the sentence. Said Water and Sewer Authority is in no way to be construed as an autonomous authority. But shall be a subordinate body of the town council. The Water and Sewer Authority is hereby designated as the Sewer Authority of the Town of Watertown. With all of the powers contained therein and pursuant to the provisions of chapter one oh three of the general statutes. Just letting the town council know seems not to be in accordance with your own charter. Any comments?
I have no comment.
Attorney Jessel?
I I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Jessel.
Uh, yeah, I'm well aware of that provision in there and that's why we kept the town council informed.
Allowing the town council to know after the fact.
During the fact was not added.
And a non-autonomous authority was able to do the. Discussions with Waterbury without any, anything to say by the town council? I'm reading you, I'm reading the ordinances of this town.
I understand and and yes, the the Water and Sewer Authority has the power to contract. Subject to approval of the Town of Watertown. We didn't have a contract. So we were in a different situation. If if we had negotiated a new contract, it would have been passed first by the Water and Sewer Authority. And then, yes, it would have been passed by the town, the Water Town Town Council.
So you are explaining to me or attempting to explain to me that the Sewer Authority was not. Was not ordered by law to get the town council to say yea or nay on the subject?
That's why we talked to the town council.
Only talk. No yea or nay. Doesn't a yea or nay indicate not having the town, the Water Authority to be autonomous? Autonomous is the clear word used in the ordinances.
I understand.
And so I'm act, I'm curious what it means within the life of the authority.
I don't understand your question.
Sorry, I'll not continue. It's late.
Okay, thank you. I I think if you were trying to get at that, if we have a contract, it gets passed by this board and then it gets passed by the town council.
Mr. Sugden, uh, you just said that you were, rather than do something in the Town Times, you'd be considering putting something in the next bill? When does the next bill come out?
When, when's our next bill come out, Dave? It's supposed to be quarterly.
We send out, we send out bills quarterly, but sort of on a rotating basis uh, per month, so. A certain group will get, so I believe there's four cycles. So cycle one would get their bill first. The following month, two, and you know, and it's just a continuous loop of billing.
So conceivably, some people might get that information on how to understand their bill in a month.
Yeah, the 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 uh, authority is gonna have to decide how to do that. We'll put it on the agenda for the authority to decide. It was just a uh, quick thought because some people do not yet or or read uh, the Town Times.
I think I I I'm I'm not trying to challenge you, but I think most of us read the Town Times.
I would, I would differ, cause uh, nobody in my household reads the Town Times.
I'm sorry to hear that because it's um, a major source of information for the people in town. Um, the reason, and a lot of people don't get the Waterbury Republican because they can't afford it, especially the older people. But my question, what I'm getting at.
Kind of a thing of the past, but.
Right, but there's a population of our town that is well, a a majority, I can't give you figures, that are over fifty-five. And I've worked with the seniors for years and many older people. Don't look electronically for their mail, but that's, I mean, their news, but.
Almost at that point.
Okay, but that, that's not why we're here. Um, but my, what I'm asking is. How long a time period could conceivably go by before people get the explanation? About how their bills are, are, how, how to understand their bills? Because again, you know, we're, we're, the people, people feel that they're, they're. They're being looked down on. People feel that the the authorities in our town have disdain for the public. And I think it's very important to get the information out as quickly as you can.
It could take, uh, it could take a month or two.
Okay, because I I just, I just feel that uh, for everyone, not just the people here, but for your own. Own images and and what people think of our, our authorities in our town. I I really think it would be beneficial to, please, don't wait. Do this as quickly as possible. Um, I spoke at the town council meeting on Monday and one of the things I talked about was crisis communications. And and a fundamental teachings of crisis communications is that if if you're an organization and and there's an issue. That's really affecting the public and you don't address it immediately, accurately. The perception of the perceived, the perception of this, the organization. And in our case, it's the town, is that. The organization is hiding something. The organization is. Trying to avoid criticism or evade responsibility. I'm not saying you are doing that.
Yeah, I I'm a, I'm a volunteer on this board as well as the others. And I'm also a customer of the Water and Sewer.
Understand, and I'm I'm not being disrespectful. I'm I'm talking about crisis communication and we have crisis here. And the people here feel it's a crisis, so all I'm trying to say is. Not, I'm not accusing you of this. I'm talking about any organization. That is having a crisis that does not immediately and accurately. Address it to the commu, their community, whether it be their constituents or whether it be their customers. The perception is that something's being hidden. Responsibility is being evaded or criticism is being, is being avoided. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not accusing you that. I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think what it comes down to is, is I I'm a, I'm a ratepayer as with you people here in the audience this evening. And believe me, my wife doesn't wanna have to pay any more money, but unfortunately. The city of Waterbury's put us in this position that they wanna charge us more money.
That's not what I'm asking right now. I I I'm just asking that you don't wait. To communicate to the people in town and you're a ratepayer yourself. And and you deserve, although you you'll know because you're on the the authority, but. You too deserve to understand if you didn't. And that's all I'm asking. I I know you're all volunteers and and I respect that. But I'm just asking you to not wait to communicate to the people. I I think. I think will benefit not only the, are the residents of this town, I think it will benefit you as well, but the, the authority as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll take one last one here in the, in the essence of time this evening. I think everybody's had a. Chance to to get up uh, once or twice.
Frankie Popalowski, thirty-five Justin Avenue. I just have one question. Out of the forty-five hundred ratepayers in this town.
Yeah, just, yeah, I'm sorry about the audio this evening.
That's all right. Out of the forty-five hundred people that are ratepayers in this town, how many are residential and how many are businesses?
Say that again?
Out of the forty-five hundred ratepayers in this town, how many are residential and how many are businesses?
We, we had that number. I don't know if Dave has it with him this evening. I know I've looked at that number and I I can't remember what it is on the top of my head, but we did.
Well, give me, give me a guesstimate.
I wouldn't wanna give you a mi, a number that's not accurate.
Well, you must have some idea.
Uh, let's say twenty-eight hundred are residential and the other. Amount is industrial and commercial.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
It's not an accurate number though.
Yeah, don't hold, hold us that number. I know we've looked at it and I, we don't have that accurate in front of us this evening. Okay. All right, I think uh, we're good for this evening. I'm gonna uh, close the pub, public comment section of this meeting. And we're gonna adjourn the public hearing. Thank you very much. All right. Welcome to the uh, Watertown Water and Sewer Authority Regular Meeting. Wednesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is now seven thirty-three PM. We're at the Watertown High School Auditorium. Item number one on the agenda this evening, call the meeting to order. Item number two is roll call. Jim Sugden. Item number three on the agenda, old business, we have none. Item number four, new business, A, approval of regular and special meeting minutes. We've got uh, minutes from eight sixteen, nine thirteen, nine twenty and nine twenty-six.
Checking the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries to accept the minutes. Four B on the agenda this evening under new business, action on proposed quarterly quantity rate increase. Pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, uh, state statute seven dash two thirty-nine and state statute. Seven dash two fifty-five and public hearing. One is water user rates, proposed thirty percent point seven six cents. Increase in quantity rate per one thousand gallons. From the current quantity rate of two dollars and fifty-two cents to new proposed quantity rate of three dollars and twenty-eight cents per one thousand gallons. And number two, under line B is sewer user rates, proposed thirty-five percent. Uh, one dollar and five cent increase in quantity rate per one thousand gallons from current quantity rate of three dollars and one cent. To new proposed sewer quantity rate of four dollars and six cents per one thousand gallons.
Go movement, Jeremy.
So at this time, we have a uh. Move, uh, motion to uh, move on the new rates. Do I have a second? Motion's have been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, adjournment.
Um, can I just add up something to the new business? It it's apparent that we haven't done a good job for the management.
Richard, you have to make that a form of motion to add that to the agenda. There has to be two thirds of votes to pass it.
All right, so we've gotten by uh, four A and B, so we're under new business, so if you wanna make a motion to add. Um, to the agenda. Yep, we'll pass one down to her.
Thank you.
The item on the agenda I'd like to add is um, the explanation of the billing. Um, that was discussed earlier today.
Okay. I have a motion's been made to add to the agenda of the billing item. Um, the expl, explanation of the billing. Do I have a second? We have a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say by, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Okay. We now have uh, another item under new business to discuss the um.
Explanation of billing. So my thought was, um, they talked about adding it to the billing. And then also putting it in Town Times. I think it would be best if we did both. This way here, we've covered ourselves uh, regarding if. For some reason, a person is a snowbird and doesn't get their bill. Or for some reason, they don't read it in the Town Times. I think if we were able to. Or for some reason, they don't read it in the Town Times. I think if we were able to do both. I think it would open up the lines of communication between the ratepayers in this board.
Okay.
I agree, we have to, I'm glad you made that motion.
Okay. So Dave also, um, thinks we should also put it on the website. So we have three forms of communication.
Okay, so that's in a form of a motion to add it to the billing, the Town Times and the website.
WSA.
WSA website. Okay, do I have a second? Your second, okay. We'll open it up for discussion.
Okay, I, Marissa, uh, glad you made that motion. Uh, I was discussing with Paul just a minute ago. That we have to make it just as simple as we possibly can. I think we have to take and show. What our cost is of, of the, the bill. And what the cost is that Waterbury, uh, is charging. So it's, it's a two-part situation. With the rates from, uh, two thousand eighteen, okay, because that's basically what, what we were using. Right, it's right underneath it, what your bill would be if we use our cost in the same, in the same bill. But the new water cost, if you pay Waterbury's bill, okay? To show the difference, the two totals. One total is what you're paying now and this is the horrendous. Rate you'd be paying if we accepted Waterbury's rates from the start.
I'm not sure I understand. I was just trying to make it to simplify as, as simple as possible. Your bill is a hundred dollars. You're, currently you're paying a hundred dollars. Come the rate increase, you would be paying a hundred and twenty dollars and here's the difference. And, and this way here, I don't think it needs to be so complex. I think it had, you have to keep it simple. So people can look at it and say, hey, you know what? My bill went up twenty bucks instead of saying, and, and this is the reason for it. I, I, I don't know, I don't know what the bill looks like, so, um. So maybe someone else can, can answer it, but I'm just trying to keep it as simple as possible.
So Dave, will we, will we have to list, probably the simplest way would be to list the different meters. The fixed rate's not charged, changing at this point, but the.
I could say, we, we have to just, it's a, it's a sample bill, so. We take the quantity and that would be a sample bill. And you would have your total.
I think, I think really you have to show what we're charging, okay, as part of the bill. And the part that Waterbury's charging is part of the bill that equals a total. And the difference is in, in the, uh, proposed bill that we would be paying is our number would be the same. But the second part of that makeup of that, that second bill was what Waterbury, if they, if we accepted their charge. What would the total bill? And you look at the two totals to see one, our total is now a two. The, the, the new total, if we accepted Waterbury's charges and how much the difference is.
Do you think that that would confuse people more though? I'm just, I'm just thinking that instead of this.
Yeah, I don't think they can get into weeds. I, 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 I think it makes it more complicated. I think you just simply show them the makeup of the bill. Today, way we charge and the makeup of the bill if we had to use Waterbury's rate, because our rates the same.
And there is some information on the current bill, I believe. My wife pays the bill, but. Uh, so I don't necessarily look at it all the time, but there, it shows the meter rate is different. You have to know which meter you have. Because it.
No, because the rate is based on the usage. The flat fees are.
Yeah, that's what the usage is, but each meter has the, shows what the, it shows the. Fixed rate and then the usage rate and then you take your gallons you've used and multiply that by the.
Right.
Use, use it, uh, uh. A sample rig of a, of a normal, normal residential bill.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a hypothetical, but you, you should say no.
Right.
And I think that, that. If you send, if you send that out with the, um, bill. Everybody who was a user will get it. There would be no excuse, well, I didn't see the paper. Okay, I missed it, uh, you're hiding it, et cetera, along with the bill and they'll all get it.
Right, I understood. I, you know.
I think we're just trying to cover all bases.
Right, Daniel Jack, whatever goes on the WSA website is going to be the same thing that you're going to get in your bill. And you would get it in the Town Time or the Watertown Times. All right, so all three. It's all going to be the same document. It's all going to be the same example. The one thing I do got to clarify is everybody needs to understand. As Paul Jessel pointed out earlier, Waterbury charges us by a hundred cubic feet, which is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons.
We can make.
We, no, I'm just saying that entered, that's part of the equation that people have to understand. We are billing and charging by a thousand gallons. So there's a two hundred and forty-eight gallon difference between Waterbury and us, um, how they're going to look at the bill. So they need to understand, and that's why Marissa's trying to say, keep it as simple as possible. Because when you try to figure out that calculation of the seven forty-eight difference between a thousand. That sample quantity changes when you go back to seven forty-eight to, you know, for the hundred cubic feet for the Waterbury bill. You know what I mean? That's why it's complicated on, there are two different billing systems. And it's complicated in a sense that it's seven forty-eight for Waterbury, it's a thousand for us.
But the rate you would put on there is a thousand gallons.
Uh, right, but as Joe's example, I, you know, I agree with what Joe's saying, but it's a question of. They're different. There's one's seven forty-eight and one's a thousand. The, the average number that we choose. Is going to be different because you're basing it on the seven forty-eight charge that Waterbury wants to charge.
Isn't it the same as you give the temperature of Fahrenheit versus centigrade? There's a conversion factor.
Oh, I understand that.
Can we use a conversion, print out per conversion factor from, uh, gallons per. Uh, or, or price per thousand gallons versus the price of water rate would be charged for two feet foot. So that we're dealing with apples to apples.
Correct, understood.
Just about the other problem that. Most people do not, when they get the stuff, they pay their bill, they do not read what's in the.
We're going to put it on the three, if you, if it's voted by the board, that'll be in the three.
Yeah, if we have it in the three places and if somebody chooses not to want to look at it, that's.
So what I.
That's their prerogative.
What I understood for this meeting was it, it's a lack of communication and now we're going to. Make sure that the communication is in three different places. So at a later time. That's one of the issues that I think a lot of people have here today. And what I thought is here's a great way. Um, for the board to decide to, you know what, we're going to be, we want to be as open. As possible. And this way here, we've covered all bases.
And, and with all respect, some of this has been in litigation and we haven't been able to.
Right.
Talk about this, uh.
The rates.
On, on, until now.
Yep, no, you're a hundred percent right. I agree.
We'll take a vote. We have a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. A motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item would be adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, say no. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.